Okay, we'll open the Monday, April 10, 2017, meeting of the North Reading School Committee. And we, as usual, begin with public input. If anybody in the audience has some input that they'd like to have-
What's the matter?
Yeah.
These microphones are for the television.
You're gonna have to speak louder, Cliff.
Yeah, can I speak up?
I'll try to speak louder.
In the room.
These don't amplify. Usually, we don't have as large a crowd as this, so I don't have to speak as loud. We open with public input. If anyone has something to say that is not on the agenda, something not to do with the agenda, please raise your hand and we'll recognize you. Seeing none, we'll move on. We have no student report this evening. And we'll move on our agenda, move up onto new business, which is the fiscal year 2018 budget public hearing. And with that, I'll open the hearing. And Mr. Conley, you have something you're going to- I guess maybe Superintendent Bernard will-
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just by way of introduction and also leading into Mr. Conley's presentation, I would just remind the committee and also for the public's input that the school committee held a workshop on March 23rd, which was really the first opportunity that the committee came together with the administration to workshop our recommended budget. Subsequent to that, there was a finance planning team meeting on April 4th. And while there is a very good and constructive working relationship between the school department and the town, and I thank Mr. Gilberto, the town administrator, who sits on the finance planning team with us for his efforts, along with the board of selectmen and the finance director, to try and resolve what is a pretty significant budget gap from either the recommended budget or the level services budget that has been presented to the school committee previously. Following that meeting on April 4th, we continue to have a budget gap that is operating on two budgets that we have in front of the committee. The level services budget, which currently has a gap of $453,067, or the recommended budget, which Mr. Conley will talk more in more detail about what the recommended budget includes in way of meeting some of our goals of our strategic plan. That gap exists right now at $637,855. So in your packet is documentation that reflects the most recent revenue figures that have been the result of the finance planning team working together to try and match the available revenues of the town with the needs of the school department. And I would just add that, and this came up at our last meeting, that the municipal side of government also has its own challenges with an existing budget gap of just under $100,000. So tonight, what we have for you is a rather detailed presentation that outlines the recommended budget and what some of the initiatives are that we're hoping to be able to fund in fiscal year 18, as well as some details around the level services budget, which we are classifying as that budget which would enable us to move forward into the 2017-18 school year, fiscal year 18, offering the same level of services to the students of the district that we do presently. So with that introduction, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to Mr. Conley for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. So, as Mr. Bernard just stated, we have about a 20 to 25-minute opening presentation. There are copies of the PowerPoint slide presentation on both sides of the room, in the front row here, so feel free to help yourself with a copy of the slide presentation. Tonight's presentation will cover- we're gonna talk a little bit about the various revenue sources that make out both school and municipal budgets. We're gonna discuss the key budget drivers of the school budget. We're gonna get into the budget numbers and major expense categories of the budget. We'll discuss some new positions and staffing changes that are reflected in the FY18 budget. We'll look a little bit at the revenue offsets that go into the school budget, and then we will also, as Mr. Bernard just stated, review the current budget gaps and the proposed changes that we discussed at the budget workshop on March 23rd that would reduce the existing budget deficit. And then we'll end by looking at next steps in the budget process, and then open it up for questions and discussion. So, funding sources of the school budget. It's not surprising that the local property taxes make up the largest revenue source, which accounts for over 70% of the revenue. State aid, local receipts, fees, and grants make up the remaining revenue sources. These other remaining revenue sources have remained relatively flat for the last several years, and North Reading has not seen a sizable increase in its state aid for the last several years. So, this- when you have revenue sources that are remaining relatively flat, and as you know, local tax revenue was capped at 2.5%, and you have fixed costs, for example, health insurance, general liability insurance, fixed costs like regional school assessment costs, retirement costs. When you have fixed costs that seem to be rising at a rate almost double that of our available revenues, almost double of between 2 and 2.5% on an annual basis, it does present a structural challenge in funding both school and town budgets each year. And fiscal 18 has also presented various budget challenges. There's four key but major budget drivers in fiscal 18 that I wanted to highlight this evening that we've been discussing throughout the process. And the first one is our contractual salary obligations. Salaries represent over 83.4% of our total budget requests. That stat is pretty typical for school budgets, so salary obligations are always going to be a major driver of the school budget. These obligations include cost of living adjustments, step increases, in some cases, lane adjustments, and longevity increases for all eligible staff. The contractual obligations represented 2.9% increase of the school department's total, 5% of our recommended budget increase. So certainly, a major budget driver in fiscal 18, and it has been in the past. NRPS 2021, year two, is the district strategic plan. So there are 2.9 FTE positions, which total $184,788, that are guided by the district's strategic, five-year strategic plan. Fiscal 18 would represent year two of that strategic plan. That's a plan that focuses on various strategies, including, in particular, teaching and learning strategies, student support service strategies, and technology integration strategy areas that is put together by the administrative team on an annual basis, and we look- that is a guiding document for funding new initiatives. I will go into a little bit detail about those 2.9 FTE positions that were included in the recommended budget proposal. The third budget driver is the operational fixed costs. That has presented an additional challenge in the development of the fiscal 18 budget, partly driven by the needs of the middle school, high school campus. There is a need to adjust facility maintenance line items in FY18 to keep pace with actual expenditures. For example, the FY18 budget includes adjustments to ensure adequate preventative maintenance measures are in place to maintain the school's HVAC equipment, as well as to anticipate necessary increases in our utility costs. The third, the fourth major budget driver is special education out-of-district costs. So funds needed to support anticipated out-of-district tuitions and transportations are expected to increase in fiscal 18. The district anticipates a slight increase in the number of students requiring out-of-district placements and transportation in fiscal 18. This is partly the result of new students that have moved into North Reading. The FY17 budget included out-of-district placements and transportation costs for a total of 34 students. The FY18 budget anticipates that amount would increase by five students, and the district will have 39 students in out-of-district placements. The district, as we always do, continues to evaluate the special education programs, and where appropriate, has reallocated current resources to provide additional student support services, in particular, to address increased social and emotional support for students. These programs assist with reducing the potential need for outside placements and special education services. This next chart is actually- reflects the budget numbers that's reflected in our recommended budget proposal. And I think you can see some of the major budget drivers at play, as I just highlighted, the four major budget drivers. As you can see, these are some of the major changes between fiscal 18 and fiscal 17. Salaries are up 4.5%. That's the result of those contractual obligations that I just spoke of. The operations and maintenance line items are up 10%, which again is the result of an increased need of operational fixed costs, driven by the needs in a lot of ways of the middle school and high school campus, as well as necessary utility adjustments. We have electricity rates that are going up, and water rates are going up, and so forth, so those line items also need to increase, which is the major driver of that increase in that cost center. Transportation, once again, is always a challenge, and if that was the case in fiscal 18. The regular school transportation rates, we experienced an increase for the first time last this current fiscal year, and the rates are going up slightly in fiscal 18, as well as the anticipation of an increase in out-of-district special education transportation costs is resulting in that increase in that line item.
Michael, just, can you clarify, the salaries also include the new positions?
Correct, yes.
I just wanted to clarify that. That's not just-
That's correct.
-contractual obligations.
Thank you, that's correct. So the FY18 budget, I think the major driver of the 4.5% would be the contractual obligations, but this is- this number reflects our recommended budget, which, as you'll see in a moment, include other staffing increases, the NRPS 2021 strategic plan staffing increases, which was the 2.9 FTE positions, as well as some staffing increases as a result of enrollment, namely the kindergarten program, which I'll highlight. So coupled with the 2.9% contractual obligation increases that I highlighted earlier, is why that line item's going up about 4.5%. And then the other major drivers, certainly the last two cost centers here, transportation and tuitions. The main driver behind these increases is the out-of-district costs, which certainly are always very difficult to predict. But the FY18 original recommended budget was a budget of $29,984,968, which was a change of slightly over- greater than $1.4 million over fiscal 17, and that was a 5% budget increase. And that does include all of the new initiatives as part of the NRPS 2021. As Mr. Bernard spoke of earlier, we were kind of operating with two budget proposals. The level services budget, which I'll get into in a moment, was a budget that was about 4.4% higher than fiscal 17. This pie chart represents the major funding categories of the school budget that we just talked about. And as you can see, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, it's not surprising to see salaries make up the largest portion of the pie at 83.4%. As I stated earlier, that's a pretty typical stat in school budgets. The next biggest piece, largest piece of the pie is the operations and maintenance expenses at 6.1%. That is up slightly from last year, that total percent amount, again, driven by those increase in those operational costs. The remaining breakdown is very similar to what we've seen in prior years, but as you can see, certainly, the largest piece of the pie is the salaries at 83.4%. This is an interesting stat that we do kind of pay attention to and look at each year. This chart represents our pure pupil spending when compared to the state for each major expenditure category, as determined by the Department of Education. As you can see, has been the case over the last several years, we continue to be below the state average in every category shown on the chart. The total per pupil expenditure for North Reading in fiscal 16, which is the most recent fiscal amount of data available, was $13,848, and the state average is $14,995. So we are at- we are over 8% lower than the state average in per pupil spending. So I think it's fair to say that the North Reading School Department continues to provide a high-quality education at lower spending levels in North Reading when compared to the state. So now my next couple of slides are gonna focus on some of the new staffing positions and staffing changes that I talked a little bit about earlier. The first chart here is on enrollment-driven staffing needs. These were the adjustments, along with those contractual salary obligations, to the salary line items that were driven by enrollment. So I think it's fair to say that in our original budget request, this 2.5 FTE increase was reflected in our level services budget. And as you can see, it was certainly the major contributing factor to these increases was the enrollment in the full-day and half-day kindergarten program. So that, as we moved through the registration process in the both the full-day and half-day kindergarten program, it became evident that in order to provide full-day kindergarten for every student desiring such, as well as half-day, the demands of the half-day program as well, we were gonna need to increase staffing in this area. Our enrollment was higher than anticipated, and we projected enrollment a year ago in this program, and it was certainly higher than current levels. So the Bachelor School in particular was warranting an additional section, so we would need to add a 1.0 full-day kindergarten teacher, as well as a 1.0 full-day kindergarten paraprofessional to meet the demand of the full-day kindergarten program at the Bachelor School. So we added a third section. You can see the projected class sizes on the slide. If we were not to do this, class sizes would have increased well above optimum levels at the kindergarten level to 26 a class. The little school, they warranted a .5 FTE half-day kindergarten teacher. That program's enrollment was significantly up from this current year, and if we were not to add the .5 FTE half-day kindergarten teacher at the little school, we would have saw class sizes at the little reach as high as, you know, 26 as well. So this was certainly a warranted increase. We have discussed and began last year at the little school, the hybrid model, the combined full-day and half-day program at the little. The numbers didn't warrant the hybrid model at the little school, but we will talk a little bit about later in the presentation. It was discussed at the budget workshop as well, some potential, you know, potential hybrid model in the district that we will discuss later in the presentation. The NRPS 2021 positions, as I noted earlier, there was 2.9 FTE positions. The first teaching and learning strategy was a 1.0 academic teacher at the high school level. This academic teacher would help reduce class sizes in both mainly the mathematics and science classes. Currently, 40% of the core course offerings in these two departments have 28 or more students, and reducing class sizes will certainly allow for more personalized instruction. The next three increases all help to enhance the student support services strategy in the NRPS 2021 strategic plan. The 1.0 team chairperson would be at the elementary level. This would assist the district with providing additional support to elementary students with special needs, and allow for enhanced development of special education programs and support services that would better meet the needs of students. The .4 school psychologist counseling position at the Bachelor School, this would be an existing personnel that would- whose FTE would increase, wouldn't be a new position or a new staff member. The Bachelor School requires additional student support, certainly in the area of testing and counseling. As you know, the Bachelor School has the largest population of the three elementary schools in North Reading. The .4 FTE increase will allow students to have necessary support to access and participate fully in the general education classroom. The .5 FTE reading teacher at the little school would also be an existing staff member that whose FTE would increase, and that this .5 increase would allow the school to more fully implement response to intervention strategies, which would allow the school to intervene immediately for students who may be struggling. This would also assist the little school in providing support necessary to students in all grade levels. So all in all, this 2.9 FTE positions guided by our strategic plan totaled $184,788. This amount represented about .6% increase in the total 5% budget increase of our original recommended So now I'm gonna talk a little bit about where things stand, as Mr. Bernard alluded to earlier, and the most recent revenue plan that has been discussed at the beginning of April, as recently as April 4th. So the administration's original recommendation budget to the school committee was a budget of $29,984,968. That was the 5% budget increase. As of this evening, the available funds is $29,362,113. This is the most recent to-date amount. So the FY18 budget gap, again, over our recommended budget, was- is $622,855. The next, this next slide, I'm gonna kind of walk through some of the ideas that was discussed at the March 23rd budget workshop. So as you know, the school committee held their budget workshop, and at the end of the workshop, the administration discussed ideas of how we could try to bridge the gap and reduce the existing budget gap between both the recommended budget and then somewhat focusing on level services as well, and trying to reduce that budget gap. So, as I just stated earlier, the original recommended budget request was the $29,984,968 amount. Unfortunately, that was one necessary increase that came up around the middle of March. As you know, the school department operates a wastewater treatment facility as part of the middle school and high school campus. That's a wastewater treatment facility that was required, and it certainly, you know, certainly costs money to operate that and run the plant. This was a bid year to hire an operator and engineer to operate that plant, and we went out to bid, and the most advantageous bid proposal for the operator came in a little bit higher than what we're paying currently. So there was a need to make about a $15,000 adjustment in our operating budget for that line item, to continue to operate the plant of this facility. So the first necessary increase, $15,000, that would be an increase to the budget. The next proposal that we discussed was, you know, it would be the administration's recommendation, in order to balance the budget or get closer to a balanced budget, would be to eliminate the NRPS 2021 new positions, the 2.9 FTE recommended positions that I just spoke of. So we wouldn't want to reduce any existing staff or existing programs to fund the new initiatives. So that would be, so that $184,788, that would be, was discussed to reduce or eliminate those requests. I talked a little bit about the kindergarten model earlier and the hybrid model, and what this- and that's a model that the district has done this year and done that well at the little school. The numbers at the Hood Elementary School could warrant the hybrid, you know, kindergarten model, the combined half-day, full-day model from operating. The class sizes would still be at appropriate levels to run a hybrid model at the Hood School. Class sizes would be at 22 and 22 in the full-day program for half the day, and then reduce to about 16 and 17 students for the remaining half of the day for those students enrolled in the full-day program. So if we were to make that change, it would mean we would not have to hire the additional .5 FTE kindergarten teacher that I just spoke of, and that would be a savings of $31,860. So those were the two staffing changes or ideas that were discussed to reduce the gap. I would just reiterate, nothing has been adopted yet officially on any of these changes. These are all just recommendations or ideas that the administration has proposed to the school committee and discussed for consideration and discussion. The remaining line items, as you can see, these aren't any salaries or positions. I think it's fair to say they represent some expense line item reductions and some changes to our assumptions. So the district has a small capital and equipment line item to help fund some small capital projects that don't qualify for the large capital plan through the consolidated efforts with the town and the school, through the CIPC process, and equipment line items for some furniture requests, et cetera. So we've had to unfortunately reduce and eliminate that line item over the last few years. It's a small line item of $15,000. So this proposal would, once again, eliminate those line items in fiscal 18. The food service program, I think in one positive aspect, the food service program has done a very good job over the last several years in to come, become very close to a self-sufficient, break-even program. There is still a very small general fund subsidy that does exist in the operating budget, as the program is not quite at break-even, although I think for the first time at the end of this year, and looking at projections next year, I think we're fair to say we'd be very, very close to operating a self-sufficient program through a lot of hard work by the staff and director involved in the food service program. So this would make a- currently, this is a $20,000 general fund subsidy, including in the operating budget. This would cut that in half, and we would just continue with a $10,000 line item in this area. School, district operating budgets, you know, unfortunately, we've had to reduce our, you know, school and district operating budgets. These are the budgets at discretionary budgets at the school levels and departments that help fund instructional materials and general supplies and professional development opportunities here and there for teachers. We've had to kind of level fund these or go back and make some changes and reductions in this area. So this would be an attempt to, once again, go in and look to make some, you know, squeeze those budgets a little bit further between about 3 and 3.5%. That would net to about a little over $33,000 of reductions. The next two line items are essentially changes to our revenue assumptions and offsets. So the school department obviously has a variety of revolving accounts that we look to help offset the budget for, the transportation revolving account, the money that we charge for parents that don't qualify for free busing to, for a bus pass. We would look to try to achieve a little more revenue from these two funding areas to help offset the budget gap in around $15,000 in the bus revolving account and about $10,000 in the facility rental revolving account. We bring in revenue for renting school space, certainly at the middle school and the high school, and across all the schools. So it would just be making some changes to our revenue assumptions, making some reductions to some expense line items, and essentially adding a little bit more risk to our budget. Would essentially reduce the level services budget by taking the recommended new initiatives, NRPS 2021 positions, by reducing those positions as well. We would, our new level services budget request would be a budget of $29,718 here, and that would mean there would be a new revised budget gap after these proposed changes noted above of $338,067. So it gets us certainly much closer, but there certainly would be a lot of work to be done to continue to bridge the gap, to come in with a balanced budget. The next, I just wanted to talk about, just wanted to highlight a little bit, so the community, everyone is aware, that obviously, we have our general fund, our operating budget, which is the amount that we're, the school committee would, you know, adopt on May 1st. If the proposed changes I just presented on the prior slide were adopted, and I will say they have not been, there's no official action on those proposed changes, we would have an FY18 budget of $29,70180. That level services budget then would be a little over $1.1 million higher than FY17, and that would be a 4% increase over our fiscal 17 appropriation. Now that only tells a little bit, tells part of the story. I just, again, we have a variety of offsets in the form of our grants, both state grants and federal grants, as well as the revolving accounts, the programs that we charge, you know, and assess fees and tuitions for, like preschool and kindergarten and the busing and the athletic. So between all revenue sources, it would be another little over $2.7 million of funding. So when you look at total school funds, although $29,718 may be the operating budget, in reality, the total school funds available is a little over $32.4 million when you look at our variety of offsets. Now, you can see, we are making some changes to our assumptions that I just spoke of around the bus revolving, facility rental. There are a few others involved as well. And as you can see, those, we are taking a little bit more risk by assuming those revenue offsets would go up by $187,000 in fiscal 18 to help try to balance and, you know, balance the budget. And again, I will say that there is still a whole other piece of revenue that comes in, and the school committee accepts a variety of donations throughout the fiscal year. It's very, very impressive at the end of each meeting to see the amount of donations the school committee has been accepting. And if you look at our annual average over the last two or three years, we've done a much better job in collecting this data and recognizing the various private donors and support organizations that are donating funds to the district for a variety of purposes. That's about an average $175,000. And then, to really tell the full picture of all the funds that go into a school department budget to make the experience what it is for the North Reading student that we're certainly have come to be very proud of, the school, the PTOs have their in-kind donation- have come to be very proud of, the school, the PTOs have their in-kind donations as well, and they have their budgets to help support supplies and enrichment activities and variety of other classroom projects and field trips and so forth, and their budgets on average total about seventy-five thousand dollars. So, we are extremely appreciative of the support of these organizations and recognize that, you know, we could not certainly make the educational experience what it is today without their support. Did you wanna highlight before I get into the last couple of slides here, a little bit about the things that we are doing to contain our costs? So, you know, first of all, school and district expense budgets, we do look to aggressively procure all of our supplies and services, and a lot of that, most of the times, that does include purchasing from state bid lists. That means we're getting the largest educational discount that is available. From our utilities, occupancy schedules, natural gas and electricity, we certainly work to modulate the boilers and set the occupancy schedules and lighting controls to regulate our usage of electricity and gas, and we look to, we participate in a power options purchasing consortium for our gas rates, and we watch the market closely, and we've done a very good job at locking in our gas rates at very optimum times to save costs. And I think that's certainly been a highlight and a cost avoidance and a cost saver over the last several years, and it continues to be as we look to fiscal eighteen. With special education, we have a commitment to customized programs and to keeping students in our schools through the design of customized programming, and I think we continue to look at this and do a very good job at designing programs to certainly accomplish and achieve this end. We also participate in SEEM collaborative's shared transportation model. Participation in this shared transportation model means that students that are being transported to placements outside the district, we, North Reading students may be on the same vans and so forth with other participating sending districts as part of SEEM collaborative, so the twelve area districts in this area. So, when that is the case, we achieve an economies of scale and a discount when we can share our transportation costs with the other SEEM districts. And we have done some analysis on this over the past couple, several years, and we think that's a cost avoidance anywhere between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars by participating in that program. I talked a little bit about it earlier, but I just think it deserves mentioning again, the food service program. You saw a recommendation to reduce that offset that would not have been possible, you know, three or four years ago. So, I can't really say enough about the hard work of the workers in the food service program and the food service associates to control our costs and mainly to increase participation, and this has led to a significant reduction in the general fund budget subsidy over the last few years. I mean, it's essentially been cut in half almost every year over the last five years. And, you know, the last, we just constantly are looking at, you know, efficiencies, reviewing every budget line items and our constant vigilance with respect to our daily operations. That's just an ongoing effort by the part of every administrator and school department employee. So, when we look to what are our kinda conclusions of our revised level services budget, so if we were to adopt some of the changes and the reductions that we spoke of this evening and, you know, what would the FY eighteen budget conclude and what would be achieving? It would certainly allow the district to meet, again, contractual obligations with employees and employee unions, so that is a necessity. We certainly need to do that. We would include some additional staffing to achieve full-day kindergarten for those families desiring such, so we've certainly made a commitment to provide full-day kindergarten for each and every family that wants, wants full-day kindergarten in their home district, and the increases in level services increases I spoke of in the full-day kindergarten program would achieve that goal. It would provide the associated cost to properly operate and maintain the middle school and high school campus, so there's certainly, I think it's just fair to say, we've learned a lot being in this campus over the last, this is like the third, I believe, the third or the second full year this campus has been in operation, the third year if you include the high school, and we have certainly come to appreciate and learn a lot about what the maintenance needs are in this building, what the utility usage is going to be, and I think we've, are in a good place to know what needs to be done, and we feel strongly that certain preventative maintenance measures need to be in place to protect the investment that the community and town has made to build this beautiful state-of-the-art, you know, complex that we're all enjoying this evening and continuing to enjoy. And some of these line item adjustments that we've made, that we've made, although it's presented somewhat of a budget challenge as we look to fiscal eighteen, it would certainly would achieve that in, and we think it's, would save us certainly funds into the future to protecting the useful life of this equipment in this building, as well as throughout the district. It includes the associated cost to meet the academic and social emotional needs of all students. We continue to provide a comprehensive educational experience for all students, and the budget was certainly in all the district to maintain level services while taking on some additional financial risk. So, I think that is fair to say, it's kind of, you saw some of the change in assumptions we're making to some of those revenue offsets and, again, squeezing those expense budgets. There's, with every budget, there's some inherent risk, and I think that's fair to say that over the last couple of years, as we've looked to, you know, balance the budget in some difficult fiscal times, there is some additional financial risk there as well. In terms of next steps, we're gonna have, continue to have ongoing discussions with the finance planning team of our available revenues. Again, the present level services gap, I'll just highlight, as I, would be three thirty-eight oh sixty-seven if some of these changes were to be adopted. So, again, there's still work to do, but I can't say enough about the work of the finance planning team, and Michael Gubertl, the town administrator, is here this evening, and Bob Misery, the chair of the Board of Selectmen, I know could not be here this evening, but the work of the chairs and vice-chairs on the finance planning team do as they meet almost every other week over the last several months to try to put our heads together to work collaboratively, to try to achieve balance both town and school budgets, and that effort will certainly continue as we look towards town meeting in June. There will be another school committee budget workshop on April twenty-fourth, so I think what we're looking to do is receive some feedback and some questions and discussion by each of the members of the community and so forth this evening, and then the school committee will reconvene on April twenty-fourth and look to make some hard decisions and discuss the budget again. We're due to present the budget to the finance committee on April twenty-sixth, and then the school committee will come back together on May first in this room at six-thirty PM, and that will be the evening that we will vote an operating budget for fiscal eighteen to put forward towards town meeting. Town meeting is on June fifth. We continue to await state budget action, so again, the state budget process is still kinda early on in, in that process, believe it or not, the governor obviously has released his budget, but it's moving through the House Ways and Means this month, and will move on, you know, to the Senate and so forth next month. So, we are hopeful that there could be some additional state aid coming as it moves through that process, but again, it's certainly an unknown at this point in time. And then, we'll continue to take feedback and discuss the budget like we are this evening. So, with that being said, I'll turn it over to, you know, Chairman Bowers and open it up to...
We'd be happy to hear your comments or your questions. I would ask you to please use the microphone. If you just push the button on the main panel there, the microphone will light up, and we'll all be able to hear you.
Could you also, if, that microphone's for cable, so if you can move that around to whoever's speaking. Cliff, can you, would you allow some comments for us before we take public comments or...
Sure, you're one of the public, you can speak.
I just wanted to address a couple of things, and I think it's important every year to explain level services, 'cause it seems to be a confusing term. Level services doesn't mean level spending. Level services means if we, as a school district, our philosophy or our goal or our requirement is to offer full-day K, for example, to every family who wants full-day K with their child, and to offer, as we're legally bound to, offer half-day K. If we have fifty students this year and a hundred next year, that means we're gonna have to hire two, three more people in order to offer the same level of services. So, because it's level services, doesn't mean you don't hire new staff. We're not gonna put twenty-five, thirty students in a kindergarten classroom. And this year, it didn't go from fifty to a hundred, but it's gone up fairly significantly, which is why you saw the increase. Another example would be special education. Students in a fifth-grade class are in a special program that's moving up to middle school. We might not have that program at the middle school. That program has to follow the students. We have to hire the staff. So, you say, oh, then you just get rid of the program in the elementary school. No, because there are students from the fourth grade moving up to the fifth grade in the same kind of program. So, again, you have to hire additional staff to provide the same level of services that we're providing this year. So, level services does not mean level spending.
And the biggest driver of level services is your contractual obligation. So, by definition, you are gonna increase your level services budget without doing anything else by probably...
Two to three percent.
Two to three percent, right off the top, because eighty, I think Michael said eighty-three...
Eighty-three, eighty-four.
Four percent of our budget, staffing, is personnel. So, again, if we give contractual raises, COLA raises, and then the step raises, which one-third of our teachers are on step raises, then we're gonna increase the budget for the next fiscal year, just doing what we're doing now, maintaining level services, providing the same thing that we did today, next year, it's gonna be two to three percent automatically. Never mind the other budget drivers that Michael talked about, and that's why it gets up to four and a half to five percent.
Right. Yeah, between contractual salary obligations, which was, again, the major driver, at two-point-nine percent, and then making the necessary operational fixed cost adjustments just to fund utility increases with electricity, gas, water rates going up, analyzing usage over three- to five-year trends and so forth, and then trying to increase some of these maintenance line items to adequately maintain, you know, all schools as well as this campus. The wastewater treatment facility was an added cost a few years ago, trying to maintain that plant and operate it well, and then certainly addressing the needs of special education. A lot of, most cases, a lot of cases are driven by our, you know, state mandates and things where we want to, and we need to provide and obviously look to do, to do those types of things as well. Right there, you're looking at almost four percent increase of the budget as well, and we have a level services budget right around four-point-two percent increase.
And probably for the last five years, we basically fought to maintain a level services budget. Oh, we settled for a level services budget, really, because the revenues weren't available.
There's two other things, two other things I want to add. I would be a hundred percent against reducing the added position at the high school. The high school has suffered for way too long with way too high class sizes. Honestly, we should be adding three staff at the high school, not one. We have, as Michael said, forty percent of our science and math classes, the core classes with twenty-eight or more students, that's not, it's not ideal, it's not what we should be doing. Our foreign language program continues to be meager, it's an embarrassment. We have two languages, we don't start until seventh grade, and the seventh grade is an experimental where the kids go a couple of times a week, so honestly, it's, we don't really start till the eighth grade. We should have many more languages. About six years ago, we adopted Mandarin Chinese, we've never funded the budget for that.
It's part of our budget every year, budget season, every single year is to expand the foreign language program, that's unanimous amongst the committee here, and it's not even on the recommended budget this year. So, it's not, not only is it level services, obviously, it's not even in the recommended budget, it's in the budget that exceeds that.
It has already been cut.
Yes.
This is my ninth budget hearing, and they've all been the same. We never have enough money, and we always end up by going with a short amount and less, less staffing and less component than we'd like to have, and it's very, very frustrating. And I'm sure on the other side of it, you're all looking out there as taxpayers and you're saying, it's frustrating on this end too, but these people here are all taxpayers as well.
The last thing I'll say is the, there was a new position, which is a team chairperson for K through five, which would be involve the special education. To me, that position is critical. About a month ago, the Supreme Court made a decision related to what level of services that school districts are required to offer students either in the district or out of district. It mainly, it mainly focused on in-district. And they overturned a ruling that said, school districts could basically offer minimus level education. In other words, kid comes to school, kid goes home, there's no measurement of improvement or success. Supreme Court says, that's not allowed anymore. I'm not saying we do that in North Reading, but what I am saying to you is that there may be more parents saying, I think my child should get a better education, I think my child should be out of district, I think my child should have a stronger IEP with more specialists in district. If that happens, we're gonna be on the hook to provide that. This position, working with Cynthia Conant, our Director of Personnel Services and the other special ed staff, hopefully will help to contain those issues before they develop, to make sure that students in K through five have better IEPs, stronger IEPs, and we're seeing progress in their education. So, I would be against not adding that position. I'm a hundred percent against cutting the new teacher position at the high school, and I don't see any other way to provide level services at the kindergarten level without adding the staff that Michael talked about up there. And back to foreign language, our goal this year was to start introducing it at sixth grade. Foreign language should start in the first grade, and we don't start till really the eighth. We have an exploratory thing in the seventh, and that, that's not going anywhere again. And our goal is also to add more languages besides Spanish and German.
There's a real, there's a real demand for further foreign language education. We've offered a program, I think, John, a pay program.
This, this year for the first time, global child.
It's been overwhelming, how many students, how many...
Hundreds, yeah. Two-hundred-and-fifty students are paying for, is it mostly preschool or is it pre-end, post?
It runs, it's gone as high as the middle school.
No, but I'm talking about before school and after school.
Oh, yes, elementary.
And, and it shows that there's a demand for foreign language that we're not, we're not meeting as a district. And, you know, maybe people can afford that, they can pay, and they can have their students take those classes. It should be part of the education program, not something that is kind of a, you know, you go down the aisle and I'll pick one of these and one of these and one of these, and that, that's what, that's what public education's becoming anyway, when you see all the fees you pay. It's becoming an à la carte service where you pick what you can afford, and then, and it's just sad, but it's no fault of the town, the town has, you know, the revenue struggles. The biggest fault is the state. The state improperly has funded public education for at least twenty years. It's about one-point-four billion dollars short of what it should be funding education in this state. That was last year, it's probably higher. I was talking to Julie earlier, and I think the House is making some noises that they may fund, they may send us more funds to help us pay for health insurance and special education. The health insurance would come off the top, which would need more money for both the town and the schools, because there's a split on that money, and then special education would come straight to the school district. But as Michael said, that's a long way down the line, we don't know what the final budget is.
They will phase it in over the next few years.
Right. So, that's just, I just wanted to add those, add those points.
Any further comment, Janine, Julie? Okay. Now, we wanna hear from you. Please raise your hand if you wanna speak and...
Folks, use those mics too, because they won't be able to hear you on TV.
This mic right here especially, this one.
There's, there's two of them out there.
Okay.
We want you to, two mics.
Good evening. Scott Buckley, Five Alden Street. So, I agree with Mr. Webster, but this, this presentation began tonight with talking about where the revenues come from, and then the second slide talks about what the budget drivers are. I, I think every year we talk about that, and I think something has to be done to address the drivers, and I applaud the selectmen this year because for health insurance, they went out and they're trying a new way to get health insurance, which is going to save money over if we had just taken the first proposal. And I think, as Mr. Webster said, the, the team chairperson at the elementary was specifically designed to try to save cost. It won't save it for twenty-eighteen, because you need to invest in that, but you need to build the programs. One of the identified drivers was out-of-district cost. It's two-point-nine million next year. It's higher than the state average, we have a higher percentage of students that are leaving the school district, and it's only going to get worse, and we have zero dollars in tuition from out-of-districts, other districts coming here, and it's something that will pay for itself in the years to come. And I think every year we talk about, we don't have enough money to do it. We have to find that sixty-three thousand dollars to build the program, identify some of those students that have, start with the easiest programs to build here, but when we're sending people, when we're sending people just to Reading or other local districts, it's money that we're wasting, year after year. And the second point, which I don't think can be funded this year, but again, is to try to work on class size. I know that this committee has, has dedicated to try to get the class size down, but still, the average class size in North Reading is higher than the state average and higher than almost all of our peer communities.
Yeah, I don't know if it's just important to know on that, on that end, that I think the district, as I mentioned in the presentation, does, you know, work very, very hard to design those customized, those special education in-district programs to where appropriate, you know, obviously educate students in district, and, you know, we are very close to state average numbers in terms of out-of-district special education spending, I think we're about a half a percent higher when you look at the state average.
I think we're about a half a percent higher when you look at the state averages, both in our out-of-district spending, special education, as well as in our in-district spending as well. And I think it's, you know, I may let Ms. Conant comment as well, but I think it's fair to say that through the design of those programs, we've certainly done a good job keeping, educating students in the district as well.
Absolutely. I think that this year in particular is a good example of what can be done.
Fucking that one.
Sorry.
Use them both.
This year, we were able to successfully have eight students remain in district. So we did that by, as Mr. Webster had mentioned, transitioning programs. The cost savings associated with those eight students is approximately $350,000. So really taking the time to focus on programming can have huge financial cost savings to the district. So as was mentioned earlier, that's really the goal with thinking about having the elementary team chair come in so that then our current elementary coordinator can refocus and shift her priority onto programming, looking at our current in-district programs, how can we enhance those programs? And also having the opportunity to collaborate with our out-of-district coordinator to be able to say, do we have students out of district that we can design programs to bring them back? And eventually, as Mr. Buckley mentioned, hopefully the goal is we could get to a point where we are offering really solid, consistent, high-quality programming, and we can look at the possibility of tuitioning other students in.
So I, again, we're in agreement with Mr. Buckley, I think, as far as the coordinator and the class size issue. We're in agreement with both of those issues. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Kind of a question.
Just, just hold on, because they can't hear you on TV if you don't. You're on television, you're on television right now.
All right. So I was just, wow, double mic and still no sound. Can you, what do I do? I can shout louder, does that help?
Once it turns to, I think it read from white to red, Shabon.
It's not working.
Just touch it, you don't really press it so much as...
Nothing.
All right, okay.
I think it can hear you that way.
Just yell.
Okay, so I was just looking at the kindergarten slide, and it reflects, you know, roughly for the addition of the full-day kindergarten teacher and the paraprofessional, net cost of like 91 to 92,000. Where is the tuition from these families reflected? Because at 4,200 per kid, that's about 71,000 for that classroom. So it's really just a net cost of 20 grand.
Right.
Yeah, so there is an increase in the full-day kindergarten revenue offset as well to help as a result of this additional enrollment as well. It's not, you're right, it's not covering the full cost, but it's, it's covering pretty close to half, half that cost.
Michael, why don't you go to that last slide that shows the grants and the offsets? Because it would be in there, right?
Yeah, so that is...
Or the next, the last, whatever it was.
This one here. So then that $187,000 increase that's reflected, I believe it's about $70,000, you're right, is the full-day kindergarten program. So, you're right, so it's, it's an FTE increase, but because of the kindergarten tuition offset, it's, it's not, you know, a full budget impact because of that increase.
Okay. And then a second real quick question. I've followed a little bit of the news about the vocational school in Wakefield Metro, Northeast Metro Tech. The fact that they need a new building, it hasn't been touched since 1970, and there's 12 communities splitting the remaining costs. If the project is approved, say in 2018 for construction moving forward, you know, just looking at basic division, that's, that's 5 million coming from North Reading. If that, if they divide it evenly.
The formula doesn't work that way. It'll be less.
It doesn't?
It'll be based, based on the number of students, and we, I think we send the fewest students of any, of any school in the district. We sent, what do we have, 30-something there right now?
Thirty, 34 students.
And what's the total population of that school? Well, over two, is it over 2,000?
I wouldn't say it.
I think it said 1,400 in the...
1,200, so we, we have a very small population there.
So it does, so it's balanced by anticipated utilization.
There'll be a significant MSBA reimbursement for that project as well, probably up, I'm going to guess in the 60%.
I think it might be more than that.
I think it was 71% or something that they quoted. I'm just, so my, my basic question is, you know, predicting that that might be true in the upcoming years, does that come out of this discussed budget, or is there another?
Comes off the top.
Comes off.
Okay.
It, so there's off-the-top costs, there's health, healthcare, there's retirements, et cetera. So all of that is taken off before the money is allocated to the town and the school sides. So whatever's left after that is what's left for the, for the operating budgets.
So that does reduce the overall operating budget, both the town and the, and the schools when it happens.
Okay. All right, thank you, I know it's minutia, but I'm...
No, that's good.
You're asking.
Anyone else? Nobody?
I guess I have a question. Okay, this is yours.
Mrs. Castro.
Deanna Castro, Nine Broadway. Were the assumptions in budget that were presented tonight, did it include any of the information that Brad Jones released today about the House budget? It did not, any possible additional revenues?
It'd be $10 per student that I saw her on Chapter 70, which would be $26,000.
It's not reflected in the presentation.
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's not. So what's reflected in the presentation in terms of the revenue numbers was the governor's budget proposal.
Okay.
Which was funding Chapter 70 at additional $20 per pupil minimum, maybe.
Yeah, to 30, right?
Yeah, so if that increase would be proposed, then that would be, that would be additional revenue, but around 2,500 times additional $10 per student, yeah.
And that's it? Was there any other discussion that you've had regarding any of the unfunded or underfunded mandates?
They remain underfunded.
Yeah. So, I mean, we, we've certainly talked about this, you know, in the past, and we've spent, you know, the last few years trying to do a good job in the best we can working with the administrative team and so forth to try to determine that the true financial impact of the unfunded state mandates. And there's some information on our website, if you go to the budget section, that actually goes through the study that was done. It started a few years ago, it was updated last year, about just the, the challenge of many of these state mandates, many of which are unfunded or not fully, fully funded in a lot of cases. And I think in a lot of cases, we would be doing many of these mandates kind of anyway to properly educate the students, but it certainly provides an extra challenge in looking to, to fund, you know, certainly school budgets. And, you know, in a lot of cases, you know, the costs that are, that are geared towards, you know, the, the state mandates for the variety of areas is an opportunity cost for staff that spend their time kind of compliant to these mandates with auditing, reporting, and there's time that they, takes them away from actually, you know, the education of the students. So it's, it's certainly an additional challenge. I think we've put a dollar figure on it in the past, although it's, you know, it's, it's, sometimes it's hard to put a concrete dollar amount on of around, you know, between around $9 million of, of unfunded or state mandates that we have to allocate funds for. So it's certainly a challenge.
Cliff?
Yes.
I, I think, you know, this isn't something we can, that's going to help us this year or next year or maybe even the year after, but I think the town, the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, are moving in a really good direction with this Pulte Homes project over at the Berry property that's not built on now. If they built all of those units, they'd deliver approximately $3 million annually in taxes. Now, we're not going to recognize that probably for four or five years, but as they build them, as they come online, we start recognizing that, that tax money. The other good things I'm hearing from the town is that they want to take that money and reinvest it in infrastructure. They want to get sewer, especially on Concord Street. If you put sewer on Concord Street, the people that own those trucking terminals are going to say, we don't want trucking terminals here anymore. We're going to be able to sell this property for a heck of a lot more now because we have a sewer line running here. We might be able to put a hotel in here, we might be able to put a little shopping center in here, we might be able to put a restaurant in here. There was a hotel proposed many years ago for that, down there where they built that self-storage space in the U-Haul place on Concord Street. It was never built because they came in and they said, wait, we don't have any sewer, how are we going to build a hotel here? So I see really positive things happening on the town side. And, and again, it's going to take two, three, four years. We're challenged here, we don't have a retail and industrial base. We, we have about, I don't know, 10, 12% of our, of our tax base is retail and industrial, retail and commercial, and 88% is residents. So if taxes go up, it's pretty much only one group that's going to be paying it, and that's the residents. And I think that the moves that the selectmen are making and the CPC and, you know, the Town Administrator, hopefully are going to help that moving forward. It's not going to help us next year or the year after, but moving forward.
And I said it at the town meeting, and I'll say it again, the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator deserve a tremendous amount of credit for what they did. I think people take it for granted. They seized an opportunity over there to get, make a deal on that property, and it's going to benefit this community for years and years to come. So I, I just hope they get applauded for that because that was a major, major, along with hooking up with the MWRA, accomplishment for the town and the selectmen this year, really. Mrs. Capazudo. I was just warming up the back here, so, yes, I know. Yeah, just you guys.
Is that working? All right, Laura Capazudo, 12 Join Drive, I should say, Loretta Capazudo, 12 Join Drive. I just have a quick question, Michael, on the new NRPS 2021 positions, if you go back to that. Just a point of clarification on student services, the 1.0 team chairperson, is that, that's a teacher?
Correct.
And...
It's not a non-administrative position.
It would be in the teaching contract.
Okay. And elementary, so explain for the benefit, I think for the group, what that entails? Or maybe Cynthia, maybe you could...
In terms of what the position is.
Responsibilities, exactly.
So the responsibilities of a team chairperson would be facilitating initial and reevaluation team meetings for students at the elementary level. So what that would do to our current structure is right now, that responsibility sits with our elementary coordinator. So by delegating that to the team chair, our coordinator is then able to refocus her scope and responsibility to the programming piece. So the team chair would be facilitating initial and reevaluation team meetings for the, all the elementary schools.
Please.
This is a different person.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Bernard, I just, to extend the conversation a little bit around the NRPS 2021 position, so there, there were a number of other positions that, the Mandarin being one, that was spoken about a few minutes ago, that the administration made the decision to bring forward only the, understanding of the financial challenges that the town is facing right now. There were those positions that we felt among the list that were our highest priorities. And those are the ones that are reflected in the, in the chart that Michael spoke about, the, the school psychologist at the Batch Elder School, the reading teacher at the little school, the additional teacher at the high school, and the special education team chairperson. The reason that this position in particular was, although it's not the only one, was identified among our highest priorities is because not only do we see this having, this position having a critical role in doing the right thing for children, we saw it as a position that could potentially and would likely realize some savings. So I don't want to lose sight of the fact that there were a number of other initiatives that our strategic plan, when it was unveiled in 2015, to start in 2016, the five-year plan. There were a lot of other things that, as a, as an administration and as a district, that we felt we wanted to undertake and we wanted to do in year two of that plan, fiscal year 2018. But we made the decision, and we thought it was the responsible one to make, understanding that the town is in some real financial straits, that we would, we would hold off on some of those other positions, but elevate these four for fiscal year 2018 for the reason that I stated.
Lady way up in the back by the... Your cam guy.
I'm here, Mike. I'm already here, I'm 28. I want to thank you guys and everything you guys do for all of us, because you do so much work. I came tonight because I want to express my concern for our facility management people. And I want to say how much I thank them all for all the hard work they do, and I'm concerned for their jobs. As I, as they're here tonight, and all of my guys from my school are here, I am at the middle school and I am at the hood school. So they do so much work. Anyone who can take care of all the sickness in the guck that goes on in both of our schools deserves so much respect. So I came to you, all of you, and I ask what's going on with their jobs and how we're going to go on with the situation, because it hasn't been addressed tonight. So if you can, if you can tell me what's going on, I know it's going out for bid, that was in the paper, so if someone can address that.
I think you shouldn't get ahead of yourself, and I think Mr. Bernard can explain this, but I think, again, in looking at the budget situation that we have year after year after year, I think that we have a responsibility to sometimes try to think out of the box and look at efficiencies that might be out there. I think this thing got, got a little bit away from us.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, again, I'm not being defensive about it.
Oh, I know.
I think we have a responsibility, again, to look at opportunities to try to save money, to put it back into the educational plan for our students. But I, I think that the fact that we're looking at these types of opportunities or exploring these types of things doesn't mean necessarily we're going to do it. But I think the administration has a responsibility, and I think the school committee has a responsibility, to at least try to do some of these things. I mean, I, I appreciate these guys as much as anybody. I've worked with these guys on the Batch Elder Project, on the middle school, high school project. I think they do great work, and I don't think that's really the issue. I think the issue is trying to take a look around, and you're going to see this in years to come. You're going to see outsourcing, you're going to see regionalization, you're going to have to. We can't do this every single year. And we're hanging on, and the reason we're hanging on, it goes all the way back, 12 or 15 years. We had an override in 2003. We had the ARRA funds from President Obama for three years, well beyond that. We've exhausted every single revolving account that we have available to us. You know, the town has been pretty generous with us and trying to fund us for the last few years. So at some point, we can't raise our fees anymore. We've got the highest, or one of the highest kindergarten fees in the state. We're right at the top with the athletic fees. So at some point, you have to explore other options. And that's what I think the administration's doing, but I'll, I'll let, Mr. Bernard. You're at the chair, talk about this a little bit. Mr. Bernard, were you having...
No, I, I would just add that the decision, and I'll take full responsibility for it. It was my going to the school committee and expressing to them my deep concern that as the budget process development unfolded and the available revenues presented to us matched against what we wanted to do and what we needed to do, was so significant, and we were getting to a point, you know, here it is now, April, that I was trying to think outside of the box. It sounds trite, but that's the truth. I, we have spent countless hours going through this as an administrative team and looking every possible place that we could look to try to identify revenues that we thought might help contribute to closing the budget gap. But I came to a point, and again, I take full responsibility, it was my request to the school committee to let, to let me work with Michael Connolly, to put out specifications for requests for bid, and there was a certain level of reluctance, quite honestly, to do that because we understand, and I'll, and I'll say it publicly, that I'm fully aware of the emotions that come into play with, with a decision such as this. But I think you see the, the information tonight, and it's just, I think we're at a place now where we're not talking about people's jobs, clearly. I've done my best to communicate that to the affected staff, but we are seeking data. We are trying to get information to see, is there even a cost savings potential here? And I won't know that until early May. The reason it was put on the schedule that it was, was if, if, if we are to make any decisions around the budget, the time is approaching when that needs to happen. The school committee is scheduled to take a vote on a budget May 1st. The town meeting is June 5th. It was necessary to get that information on a rather fast track. When I finally came to the conclusion that I thought we had exhausted all other options on where we might, we might save money to, to close the budget gap. And I will tell you that the thing, there are things that are not being talked about publicly for reasons that are, will be pretty obvious, because there is a time and a place for talking about what those additional cost-saving measures might be. But the school committee needed to workshop the budget, they needed to hear from the public tonight, and they have another budget workshop scheduled on, on April 24th to hash that out. We will be prepared to talk about those other ideas, but we're not at a place where we, we thought it was prudent to do that tonight because part of this information gathering will, will be reflected in our decisions.
Thank you.
And I, and I would just add, I've worked here a long time, I have a tremendous amount of respect. I'll use y'all word for the guck that these people put up with. And I, I tell them that every summer when I meet with them as a staff, that they do the jobs very often that not a lot of other people want to do, in weather conditions that none of us either want to be in a school or outside in, whether it's hot or cold. But the reality of this is, this was truly driven by the financial situation and nothing else.
I, I want to add, I have a terrible poker face, and I tend to show my cards. First of all, John is 100% correct. I'd say there were more than serious misgivings in the room when he told us, asked us about doing it. If I was voting today, I'd vote against it. If I was probably voting when the money, money numbers come, when the numbers come back, I'd vote against it. We did the same thing, I think it was three or four years ago, and I saw some people in the audience who were involved with this, the food service workers. I sat on that committee, John sat on that committee, and I, Michael, were you on that committee?
I was, yes.
We had a subcommittee, there were, we could have saved money. I was against it 100%. We had a subcommittee, there were, we could have saved money. I was against it 100%, and we didn't approve it. I understand, I think it's, I think it's the responsible thing to do, to get bids, to see what services are going for. But I personally, at this point, don't support outsourcing any services at the school.
But you know, everybody tells us to try to run the town more like a business.
As a business.
And this is some of the things that businesses would look at. And again, I support these guys 100%. But I also appreciate the fact that the administration's out there trying to find solutions. And I'm not saying, people don't understand that in addition to every single municipal employee's salary, add $15,000 on top of that for benefits, for health insurance, for retirement. So that's $15,000 for every single employee, pretty much every single employee that works for the town. And, and again, we're not trying to eliminate jobs, we're trying to find some cost efficiencies. We have to start looking around, because otherwise, this trend doesn't seem like it's stopping. You know, every year we talk about, at finance planning, a three-year plan, a three-year plan, we've got to get through the next 12 months, and you know, then we worry about the next 12 months after that. So again, I, I think the administration was, was, had good intentions, and I'm certainly not going to discourage them for looking at these types of things in the future. I agree with Mel, there'd have to be one hell of a savings for us to even consider it, because quite frankly, when you outsource these types of things, there may be a monetary savings, but boy, you're not going to get the quality of work and the pride in the work that these guys give you every single day.
Absolutely.
These guys, these guys are proud of their buildings. But again, we're, we're fast approaching desperate times as to how we're going to keep this thing going.
The reality is that, right now, we're approximately a half a million dollars short between what we've got as a must-do budget and the revenue. And that's, that's where we're at.
That's the tread one.
We're short a half a million bucks. And as far as I can see, there isn't a way of getting there from here. And we can't have that situation on May 1. We have to figure out how to, how to resolve it. And that's reality. It's not a nice place to be. We seem to be here every year. As I said, this is my ninth, and there, and we've, we've always been in the shortfall, but somehow we've managed to find a way just to be able to get by. It, it's not a happy picture.
The town administrator said, did you find any extra money since Friday?
I think we identified $24,000.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Bailey.
Thank you. Marcy Bailey, 21 Dwayne Drive. Some of this has been alluded to as a result of the last question, but I have two questions. One, in the NRPS 2021 plan, if you were to institute the items in this budget, are there any natural follow-ups that you feel have to come next year or to build on this, or we don't get the full benefit of this $184,000 in positions? So that's one question. And the second question, I know, Mr. Bernard, you can't speak in specifics, but you, can you tell us in maybe some broad ways, if you don't close the minimum $338,000 budget gap, because that's kind of, you know, what you've identified that you, you can possibly do, to say it's not without pain wouldn't be accurate, but that you can possibly do now. If you have to go deeper, can you speak in broad strokes of what kind of things you'd need to do? Because I think if the audience here do not like what, what we hear, and I don't think we will, the time is now to contact Brad Jones and Bruce Tar and make it clear that, you know, this is unacceptable. But I think we need an understanding of what this means. So if you could address those two?
Sure.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So the first question around the, the strategic plan, I think we have kind of grown accustomed to, to deferring some of our initiatives each year, because to some degree, the strategic plan gives us a blueprint of where we want to be at the end of its five years. So with NRPS 2021, we set, we set a path on where we want to be as a school district, and what are the things that we want to have accomplished over those prior five years. But we do that, I think, with our eyes wide open as an administrative team, understanding that we, we aren't likely to get everything that we would want over the course of the five years. So each year, when we do, we come together in the summer as a group, and we do our updates annually to the strategic plan, we are often finding ourselves in a position where we might say, well, you know what, we may put that off for another year, and we might identify a priority. So when you ask me, are there things that I might see us building off of each year, I think the answer is, is a likely yes. Okay? It doesn't mean that things go away year to year. We might just, we might be deferring things, which makes the next year's list of prioritized positions that much, that much longer. To the second question, I'm really not in a position to talk in, in even broad terms about where those reductions might come, because I haven't had an opportunity to, to sit with the school committee and workshop that. So I think it would be almost irresponsible of me to, to do that without having that conversation with, with the committee. What I can tell you is I have spent countless hours with a good number of people, working diligently to try and identify reductions that we could make that would minimize an impact to a classroom, would avoid or minimize an impact to personnel. And I think I am at a place now where I can no longer see not affecting those two things with reductions that I might be identifying and thus recommending to the school committee. You know, the, the budget is made up largely of, of salaries, and those salaries translate to people in jobs. We have been on a shoestring operating budget for a number of years. We've, we've made reductions to or level-funded operating budgets for a number of years. When I was the high school principal, there were years when the superintendent invoked a freeze to operating budgets at the five schools and at the district level. We come to expect that now. When I became the superintendent three years ago, I've enacted a freeze every year, and it's happening earlier and earlier. Our operating budgets start on July 1, and I'm sitting with the administrative council in October, maybe November, and asking them to, to freeze their expenditures through their operating budget, because I become alarmed at what the future might hold. It could be an unanticipated cost, the possibility of a tuition for an out-of-district placement that, that we see on the horizon, and I become concerned about that and, and operate very conservatively. And God bless the principals, they are very compliant, they understand the situation, and like I said, we, we've come to expect it. But we're really operating our schools on like a four-month budget, an appropriation that's like a third of what it should be, in trying to get the things that we need. If we didn't have the support of parents' associations and other gifts that we receive from the community to help bridge the gap for those remaining, I'll call it, eight months, we'd really be in trouble. So I think I've exhausted what I think are my options available to avoid impacting the, the educational experience, the classroom experience, which is what led me to speaking to the committee a couple of weeks ago about the decision with, with the facilities personnel. Everybody's important, everybody plays a role in what our students get here, day in and day out, everyone. But there are just, we've got to close the gap, and it's significant. You all see it. It's painful, it's distasteful, it's unfortunate. We have come so far, we've made such great strides educationally here. This building is a huge testament to what this community thinks of public education in North Reading. And the thought of, of regressing is really very disconcerting to me. As, I'm sure it is to everybody in this room, that's why everybody's here tonight. But I think it would be, it would be disingenuous of me not to say that the, the next conversation that I'm having with the school committee is likely to be identifying personnel to, to close the gap. I just, I don't see it, I don't see any way to avoid that. And I'm sorry to be vague, but the reason for that is, I think, twofold. Number one, I haven't spoken to these folks, and it's out of respect to them that that has to happen. And also, there could be identifying information in the, in the discussion around what, what personnel might be affected, or at least that I would be recommending. And I have not had those conversations with those people. And, and I would want to have that before they read it in the paper or heard it on television.
I understand, thank you.
I see, in response to Brad Jones, Bruce Tar, I think 90% of the school districts in this state are going through the exact same exercise and the exact same problems as we are. Every one of those school districts is represented by a state representative and a state senator. It should be the absolute number one priority of every single one of them at the state house to do something about this, and they don't do it. So I don't know what the answer is. If everybody wants to call their state rep and their state senator, maybe they can get them inspired to do something about it. But I would think collectively, they would recognize the problem throughout the state and try to do something about it.
If I could say, it trickles down, so it's also the responsibility of all of us in the community to, there are elected officials, and to let them know that that's a priority for us.
I wanted to echo John's comment on how far we've come. Many, many of you probably haven't lived here 15, 20, 25 years, but there was about, it's probably 20 years ago, maybe a little less than that. North Reading was eighth from the bottom in the state in terms of per pupil spending. That's why I sit here, because I was disgusted by that number. And I said, this is ridiculous. How can this community be at the bottom of the state in per pupil spending? We were thousands behind the state. We are now, we're in the middle of the pack, a little bit. And so when they look at us, state aid is like, they don't need state aid, they're rich. And that, that's where, that's where we are right now. And that's why we don't get significant increases.
It's even reflected in the MSBA reimbursement for the building.
Exactly.
Construction of the buildings. We did get 49%, but you get a place like Somerville and Billerica, they get 65, 75, 80%.
70, 80%.
And we're getting 49%, so.
Mrs. Capazudo.
Michael, I think that you do yeoman's work. You have done tremendous work. You're awesome. You explain everything, you know exactly where to go with anybody's questions, and I think this should be the subject of the next Around the Schoolyard in the transcript.
Laurie, what about the school committee?
Nah, it's on Michael right now.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Thank you.
This guy, Jerry and I have tried to catch him. We will throw out random questions about a random number, and he knows. It's scary.
It's a little weird.
It really is. And, you know, you think he's fooling you, but then you look and the number is there.
You think he's making it up, but he's not. He's really not.
The hard part is that if you ask him, how much change do he, does Sean Delaney have in his pocket? He can answer. Sean can't.
Look, I wanted to address one more thing. One of the things that I've heard a couple times over the past few weeks is, why does the budget keep going up when the enrollment goes down? And that's true, our enrollment has been going down between 30 and 50 students a year for the last few years. If you take, but number one, I'll start with the high school. The high school was built for 740 students. The last two years and next year, we'll have 800-plus students at the high school. The state wanted us to build a high school for 700 students, which would have been a disaster. Kathy Willis at the time fought to get it to 740, and we got it to 740. So the high school is overcrowded, and as you see, we need to add staff. But then if you look at the elementary and middle school, a couple of years ago, we actually cut two teachers at the middle school because we had a significant drop in population. But you take the elementary schools, and say you have, you lose 30 kids at the elementary level, that's K through 5, that's six grades.
Three schools.
Over three schools. So you might be losing one or two kids per class at the most. So we'll have a situation where we'll say, geez, it's 52 kids, do we really need three teachers in the first grade? Well, you're not going to have a first grade of 26 and 26. I know there are people out there that say 26 and 26 is fine. It's not fine. And that's the issue. If, if we had a tremendous drop in population, we could.
Enrollment.
In enrollment, right, in one area, then we could, you know, we could reduce staff.
We need overpopulation.
But I don't see that happening. And people say, oh, but the big developments are built. Drive down any main drag in this town and see how many houses are being torn down, and new big houses are going up. And you're not going to have couples without kids buying those houses. They may buy them without kids, but they're going to have two and three kids two or three years down the line. And, you know, this, this town is, in fact, I think Michael's projections show us starting to go up a little bit after a couple of years, especially at the elementary level. High school and middle school, we're going to see some, you know, hopefully, the high school within two or three years will actually be at that 740 level that we built it for. And the middle school, I think, is where we're seeing that, the most reduction in the next.
And the issue with the high school, when he says it's overcrowded, it's a staffing issue, not space issue.
Space re-planting.
Space, everything's fine, so.
Any other questions, comments? This is Manapelli. Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Manapelli, 33 Downing Road. I have a question, I think, about what was the out-of-district costs. And the, it seems like in one of the, in one of your FTE, the school services, elementary school services, additional position, I think you said that keeping eight children in, in district was a savings of $350,000. How does that translate? Does that, does that increase the costs in-house for that savings? It seems like money well-spent if it's going to save that, but is it, it doesn't whittle away that 2.9, does it?
No.
How, how does that translate, is the question?
So.
If you can answer that.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a, it's a good question. So we, one of the things that we did last year, when we were standing up here a year ago, is we were actually advocating for a couple of key special education, you know, positions to help that some of these key programs transition from elementary school to the middle school, from the middle school to the high school. And we, we did that in a lot of ways, and we're advocating for those, for those positions, you know, to, actually as a cost-saving measure, to avoid what would have been more costly out-of-district placements if we were not able to meet the needs of these students in district. So yes, they, so that, there is, and a cost to providing and adding those positions into the budget, but it is far less than what would have been if we were to add the $350,000 to outplace those eight students outside the district. And we feel we're meeting those, those students' needs more, more appropriately in-house as well, by keeping them in the programs.
You know what the class of the two positions, was it two positions we added?
I want to say it was two teaching positions and a paraprofessional position, so it's about $150,000. So it's about $200,000 less than what it could have been.
To, to pay the out-of, out-of district. And I had another question for you, if you can answer the, on the, on your, the new addition of the $15,000 as a result of the bid for the wastewater treatment?
Yes.
Did you already have an amount for the, I don't know this, the last year's budget, or what, what's the difference? Is it in addition to what you already had factored in?
It is, yeah. So we actually, believe it or not, we, a couple of years ago, we added a $150,000 line item to successfully operate the wastewater treatment facility at this building. And I think over the last couple of years, we've done a very good job working within that $150,000 allotment, and we've spent a little bit under each year as we closed out the fiscal year. So this year, as a, as a rebid year, we actually, in the preliminary budget proposal, increased that allotment to 160, anticipating that there would be a little bit of a, an increase when we go back, when we went out to bid, for both the engineer and the operator. The, the engineer, actually it's a two-part bid proposal. The engineer came in very similar to our costs this year, so we thought, you know, hopefully that, that would be the same case for the operator. But unfortunately, it wasn't. The, the cost to operate the plant increased by about $25,000. So the $10,000 that we had originally increased had added in the preliminary budget proposal, which came out before the, the, the due date of the bid, wasn't sufficient, so we had to add the $15,000, about $25,000 increase.
So it's $175,000.
So now we're up to $175,000.
And our initial projection was $100,000 when we first started this, when we first opened. So that's what we thought it was going to be.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item on.
Thank you.
Is the school committee self-evaluation.
Recession, let everybody get out of here.
But don't.
Let everybody get out of here.
Oh, I missed on this. I would have been sitting at the.
We'll take a five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess.
All right.
Oh, that's why.
All right. Oh, wow, all right.
Ellen Martin the other night. She was an expert.
Oh, no, they're related.
Yes, I talked to her on the phone, yes.
The whole staff there. Seen on Facebook. I need to be guided. You definitely do. I do. Good to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Tough job. Thanks. Tough job. Thanks.
You were.
Don't kid yourself. Thirty-three.
Thirty-two.
It was six thirty-six to seven oh-nine.
Oh, it is. Yeah, it is, oh, for sure.
Andy Schultz, how you doing? Nice to meet you.
Bye, Mrs. Levin.
You're going to go down with that whole.
And now they have all problems, so.
Ron's generals, actually.
Ron's generals.
She's, um.
What's I want to hear?
Little school, right? Little school, going to go to.
Yeah.
Or a graduate. She had my niece.
Who's going to pick it up and run with, with what people don't have to budget?
Nobody. No one.
I'm trying to remember, like, who got it.
I'm trying to.
You know, when a lot of the kids are, it's, it's.
You were.
Don't kid yourself.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Six thirty-six to seven oh-nine.
Andy Schultz, how you doing?
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 You were.
Don't kid yourself.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
It was six thirty-six to seven oh-nine.
Andy Schultz, how you doing?
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 She's, um.
What's I want to hear?
Little school, right? Little school, going to go to.
Yeah.
Or a graduate. She had my niece.
They know.
She had my, both my nieces.
Who's going to pick it up and run with, with what people don't have to budget?
Nobody. No one.
I'm trying to remember, like, who got it.
I wonder.
I'm trying to.
Different names.
Is there a performance bond in the?
I think Mathis sent it to me.
That they can get more money than?
I don't know about that.
You know, to do the job and.
He's home with the boys, so.
I don't know.
You got it, yeah. The day we have to get together.
Kind of industry, and thank you for coming.
I wanted to talk about.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Put my best name on it.
You did.
When I saw my email, I said, this is one, you know, one of two things.
I'm Julie, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome.
That's all it comes down to.
Schrout sided on their part, too, with, you know.
You know, like, when we reflect upon, you know, potential of outsourcing for, you know, second shift custodians. We need to, no, but we need to say, how bad is it that we are willing to go this route? Like, that's, that's the ultimate, you know, that's how bad it is.
Oh, well.
I have to be quite objective to your school policy.
So I'm quite objective to the church.
Oh, yeah, really.
Think about it, Reading has twice the population.
Yeah, did you get everything we said?
Yeah.
I thought the opposite.
Yeah, 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 well, you got Mark Bassett's stop and shop, that whole walk.
That's it, though. But they have twenty-seven thousand people versus fourteen. That's where, I thought the same thing when I first heard those numbers.
She has family there that she visits. Cindy? She's great. Anne, Anne called.
We're broken records, that's all I talk about.
Anne called you about taking the notes that I left.
You know, and it's unfortunate, like, as a, as a parent of young children.
Anne Landos, she called you about taking the notes.
You know, I'm looking at, how can we not spend that money? I'll buy math books, I'll buy, like, whatever, but we.
We would just say it, we'd have to say it. Well, I'm glad there were people here, too. Let them start talking about this in the coffee shops.
But very nice to meet you guys, nice to meet you.
Me, too. Thank you.
It's like your hardest part of the year?
It's, it's so, like, I come in pumped and I leave so defeated.
You like the town to rustle off?
Hey, agree.
It's so, it's like you walk out wiped because it's just, and, and we've heard the same.
Well, you two did this with pay, right?
Yeah.
Paying the glory.
Yeah. That's what my husband called my, well, you know.
He said, he, he, he restricts me from depositing the check in just one account. I have to do it in multiple accounts in a day.
You know, and it's, it's a huge, you know, time commitment.
Yeah.
With my kids, like, my daughters.
At our P S day?
Eight and thirteen.
All right, Cliff.
My daughter's at the.
We're ready.
Will you ever get me to bed at night?
That was weird. I know I'm typing my password. I'm going to have to talk.
Sam, I know more Spanish than you kids.
I don't know how I got it.
I didn't realize it was.
No, I was, wasn't running off this.
Some do.
And then I hit shut down. It wasn't taking my password, yeah.
It's very personal to get here.
It's too early.
I have problems.
Don't turn it on, it's too early.
Thank you.
Yes. Uh, I think, Julie, you're not using the computer, are you?
No, should I? I mean, I don't mind putting it up.
Nobody's leaving.
Yeah. Do you want?
Yeah, thank you, goodnight.
Need a receipt?
I'll shut it down. Michael, thank you again. I'll talk to you.
What you gave me, so I was checking.
Julie, take care, nice to see you.
This wasn't listed. Oh, the details, okay, yeah. Yep. I will put that in there. But I thought, like, you didn't want to do that? No, I probably just.
Yep, I told her, I said, she was glad you came.
Because I tried to do copy and paste and it wouldn't. No, no, no. I didn't change any more. Because then that makes more sense, okay, all right. Do you think I should or no? John, do you think I should? I mean, it's kind of like.
It's too late now.
Oh.
You don't have, do you have to?
Well, what do people have to reference? Does Dan have it? Does Dan?
Dan, you have a copy of that, don't you? The evaluation?
I mean, it looks like everyone is leaving. Well, Cliff needs to, dang dang, let's get this going.
How are you? Good, you too, eh? There you go.
So, Kate, I don't know if you, I mean, I have some things. I'll let you take the lead. What do you think? Like, just read some of the comments or? Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily read all of them. Like, I'm, I'm not going to read all of them with John's. Yeah, I might paraphrase the majority of it.
Yeah.
I mean, there's not a lot, so I don't mind.
Yeah?
One hundred thousand.
I don't know how to say how we do with that.
Patrick?
Um, I wouldn't worry about it, because he's the, you can look down at the paper and see what she's talking to. Right, yeah. And I don't think really anyone else is going to be here. No, but there's just nothing to kind of reference for people to. Is everyone leaving?
Hey, Cliff, Andy Schultz, I didn't ever bet. Nice to meet you. I'd say you guys did a nice job.
It was everyone leaving.
Cliff does a good job running the show.
He's a good man, Jack, right? He's tapped about. He'll be fine.
What?
He'll be, he'll be fine.
That's my problem. My problem, I didn't want.
It should be brief, too, right?
That's right. I know.
I'm each and each, I have to describe things in detail.
You do a good job.
And, and you know, my. Willow needs you.
Hmm?
Willow needs you.
Well, that's, yeah. My son is in puberty until after nine. So my husband's like, I'll put her in her pajamas if she falls asleep in the car.
That does not sound good. And I, I explained to her.
She wakes up, you know, goes to school tired.
Each of the circuits in the car have the. That was, that was good. It holds a memory. I'm glad there were people here.
Well, they need to.
They need to just not talk about it. Let them start talking about it. I think it was good. You're disconnected, so there's no following.
Oh, right. Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And there's no energy, because you took the energy.
Right, 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 right.
But she was smart enough to know she shouldn't touch that.
Exactly.
Andy reminded me tonight, he and I met like seven years ago, he was on a plane, he was on a plane to Fort Myers.
Really?
He was sitting right next to me.
Meeting will come back to order.
You got your.
Yeah. Next item on our agenda is school committee self-evaluation. And Ms. Copien, Ms. Embriano have, are members of this evaluation subcommittee, and they will present the composite self-evaluation results and facilitate a discussion about the use of these results in goal-setting workshop to be held in the summer.
So I hope you've all had a chance to look over our.
Yes.
Final self-evaluation results. We have a comparison from last year, fifteen, sixteen, to this year, sixteen, seventeen. I think I'll start by just kind of noting some.
Where's that?
I put it, no, right there. Oh, it should be in your packet.
I didn't.
From Friday.
Oh, okay, thank you. I thought you were giving something.
So, one question that we as a subcommittee kind of last year had some issues with, this year it seems to be creeping back up on us, is the adopting a mission statement. So only, I think, one of us might have put a not addressed. So I don't know if this is something going forward that we discuss as a committee to possibly remove, because that has been done.
Yeah, I, I think that should be removed. We, the school district.
Are you talking to the school committee?
Yeah, school district, right?
Mission statement.
Yes. The school committee would, why would we, yeah, we wouldn't have a different mission. We might, we might, like, our mission might be to undermine the superintendent.
Right. All of that, all of, you know, that has been addressed through N R P S twenty-twenty-one. So, you know, we've approved that, we've discussed that at length. So I don't know if this is something that needs to stay here. The reason I bring it up is that it affects the rating score, so it's not a true valid representation of whether we think we've done it or not.
Yeah, probably ought to not be on next year.
Right, right. So that was kind of what we wanted to share, just because there was an asterisk, and we just wanted to kind of bring that to your attention. In addition, there was a slight increase, I believe, in professional, no, a decrease for school committee professional development opportunities. While many of us have gone through the charting the course programs through mask, we don't really see, well, I don't see myself doing a lot of additional professional development in this area. So I think that's why that continues to kind of stay at a two-point-six. I don't know if you want to share any individual thoughts on that?
I'm as, I'm as developed as I'm ever going to be.
I'm underdeveloped, I cannot say anything.
No, I think, I think we've talked about this before. I think we do have, we do have the new committee member kit that was put together that you helped work, that you worked on with Mr. Bernard. You know, maybe, maybe there could be more, I mean, if anybody wants to go to the mask event.
Conference.
At Cape Cod, that's available and it's paid for, correct?
Yes.
We'll pay for that.
You know what we could do, I mean, I don't know if it makes sense, I don't know if any of us need to take any more time, but if you had a little regional professional development seminar.
Pretty good idea.
Brought in school committee members, say, from Reading and maybe Andover and, you know, contiguous communities.
I think that's a good, that'd be a good idea if we.
And brought in a speaker or brought in somebody from mask or somebody like that that would go over different topics.
I know that, that mask has regions.
Right.
You know, and they have kind of region leaders.
Yeah.
Seventeen seventeen. I think I'll start by just kind of noting some. Oh, it should be in your packet.
I didn't.
From Friday.
Okay, thank you.
So, one question that we as a subcommittee kind of last year had some issues with, this year it seems to be creeping back up on us, is the adopting a mission statement. So, only I think one of us might have put a not addressed. So, I don't know if this is something going forward that we discuss as a committee to possibly remove, because that has been done.
Yeah, I think that should be removed. We, the school district. Yeah, school district, right?
Mission statement. Yes.
The school committee would, why would we, yeah, we wouldn't have a different mission. We might, we might, like our mission might be to undermine the superintendent.
Right, all of that, all of, you know, that has been addressed through NRPS twenty twenty-one. So, you know, we've approved that, we've discussed that at length. So, I don't know if this is something that needs to stay here. The reason I bring it up is that it affects the rating score. So, it's not a true valid representation of whether we think we've done it or not.
Yeah, probably ought to not be on next year.
Right, right. So, that was kind of what we wanted to share, just because there was an asterisk and we just wanted to kind of bring that to your attention. In addition, there was a slight increase, I believe, in professional, no, a decrease for school committee professional development opportunities. While many of us have gone through the charting the course programs through mask, we don't really see, well, I don't see myself doing a lot of additional professional development in this area. So, I think that's why that continues to kind of stay at a two point six. I don't know if you want to share any individual thoughts on that?
I'm as, I'm as developed as I'm ever gonna be.
I'm underdeveloped.
No, I think, I think we've talked about this before. I think we do have, we do have the new committee member kit that was put together that you helped work, that you worked on with Mr. Bernard. You know, maybe, maybe there could be more, I mean, if anybody wants to go to the mask event.
Conference.
At Cape Cod, that's available and it's paid for, correct?
Yes.
We'll pay for that.
You know what we could do, I mean, I don't know if it makes sense, I don't know if any of us need to take any more time. But if you had a little regional professional development seminar.
Really good idea.
Brought in school committee members, say from Redding and maybe Andover and, you know, contiguous communities.
That'd be a good idea.
And brought in a speaker or brought in somebody from mask or somebody like that that would go over different topics.
I know that, that mask has regions.
Right.
You know, and they have kind of region leaders.
Yeah.
I haven't seen a lot in our vicinity.
Honestly, as far as professional, we don't really do anything.
No.
I, I, I'm just thinking too, if we did it locally, maybe you could rotate, like, you know, do it every three or four months, bring in a speaker and then go from North Reading to Andover to Redding. So, you're not traveling a great distance and, you know.
The other thing is you're not, not only, you know, bringing a speaker is good, but sometimes you might just have a roundtable.
Right.
You know, to discuss current issues, key issues.
Because the superintendents do it.
We do.
They do it.
Yep.
Or like strategies, you know.
Right.
Programs, funding, that sort of thing.
Not necessarily sitting down and.
I think that's a great idea for you guys next year.
No, no, not that we need, I mean, but it would, it would be interesting to see if, you know, you can get updated on some things and then.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think, I think we can always do more. I think, honestly, as someone who's been on here for thirteen years, I don't look as much for professional development. That doesn't mean that there aren't a lot of things out there that would help me and help the committee as a whole, so.
And not that there's any like, you know, panaceas out there, but somebody make them up with something that we hadn't thought of.
Correct.
We just get stagnant, that's the problem with being here so long, is you just kind of continue things the same way all the time.
Actually, I, I think that the professional development that you get by reading the listserv is huge, because there's more stuff on there than you see what other, other districts are having problems with. You have questions from others that are asked that.
And we're getting, you know, direct information from Desi, you know, Tracy Novak goes and blogs and, you know, records important sessions.
And you're getting, and in the end you get an answer.
Yes.
You, you have some sort of an outcome and an answer and it gives you some direction. And I, I, I really think that's an extremely valuable source. It gives you, in addition to your own experiences, it gives you experiences that others are finding in the same kind of an environment that you're faced with.
Yep.
I just, I thought the leadership and governance said, um, masks were obviously averaged lower than what they were last year.
No, they're about.
No.
No, about the same.
You think they're the same?
No, when you total them up, not that anybody is statistically minded yet, but if you total the average for the sixteen seventeen period, it comes out to seventy-six point four. And, and for the earlier period, it's sixty-eight point four.
One.
I'll have more on that later.
So, one noted increase, actually two, was adequate allocations for professional development for staff. And I attribute my rating on that to the adoption of the new math program and the professional development that is ongoing for, you know, at least at the elementary level, I see and hear a lot about that. So, that's a definite improvement, I think that's been pretty low in past years. And also receiving feedback from public stakeholders. That went from a three point oh to a three point four. I see that, you know, that's a noted increase as well. One decrease that I want to call your attention to is under the educational program, specifically number twenty-six. The educator evaluation system, negotiating and implementing it. The question of can our administrators handle, you know, the current requirements involved in that evaluation system. So, I think that's perhaps why that has dropped so significantly from a three point four to a two point nine for this year. If anyone wants to share their thoughts or comments about that.
I'm gonna guess whoever, I mean, I forget how I ranked that, but obviously the drop is indicative of probably.
I mean, you have yours.
It's been, it's been implemented.
Right.
It's gotta be, somebody's feeling that it's not, you know.
Right, right. And just, I think that the questioning of, you know, the, the amount of people that our administrators have to, have to evaluate, is it, is it feasible? And I think, you know, that will determine its effectiveness overall.
I think that's probably a fair statement. I mean, I gave it a four because I think it's been implemented, but, you know, in terms of the ability of the administrators to handle the caseload that each has, and it's not only, is it only administrators or is it also other, is it just, there's other, others that evaluate, right?
No, only, only administrators.
So, principals, assistant principals?
Principals, assistant principals.
Superintendent?
Special education coordinators. Assistant superintendent, correct, PPS director.
So, how many people do we have that are evaluating?
So, you have five principals, two assistant principals would be seven, you would have two special education coordinators would be nine. The assistant superintendent is ten, myself, director PPS, twelve.
So, we have twelve people to evaluate approximately two hundred and fifty.
I'm sorry, the digital learning.
Thirteen people to evaluate about two hundred and fifty to three hundred people.
Yeah?
Yeah. That doesn't seem to be too efficient, that's a state thing. I mean, again, that doesn't seem to be an efficient way to run an airline, never mind a school system.
It sounds like fail.
Yeah, yeah. I wasn't even thinking about that when I, when I, when I evaluated that. But that's a really, no, I know you're not doing everybody every year, right?
Correct.
But still.
In a full-blown, there's formative evaluations, summative evaluations.
So, how many people, so at the elementary level, no assistant principals, you have one principal, they're responsible for every teacher in that school?
Correct. Now, there, there might be a few exceptions where the assistant superintendent takes on, say, either Patrick does evaluations in physical education and the arts.
About the core courses.
Core classroom teachers, correct?
So, we could have between fifteen and twenty, twenty-five people depending on the size of the school.
It's, it's quite a cumbersome process. If we, you know, we, we have adopted a belief that we're not just checking boxes. We, I think, have adopted a belief and have followed through with providing narrative feedback to people because that's where it's most valuable. So, we're, we're trying to give the process as much integrity and I think we're doing that, but it has become a significant amount of time.
I understand the lower mark there then, that's understandable. Because they might be on a two with. Right, but sometimes we're on a two-year plan and they're
Correct.
one-year plan or three-year, whatever, whatever it is. Yeah, okay.
I had a question on number thirty-nine. Are you guys, when you're signing the warrants, are you reviewing them and using due diligence, are we required to do that, are we doing it? Are we just signing them?
I, I go through every single item.
I don't, I can't sign them, I used to at least look through them, but I'm just curious.
Absolutely.
The one thing about the system.
Because I'm not signing them anymore. So, you guys are just signing them.
One thing about the system that we're using, where we're doing it electronically, you get the, the, all of the backup.
Yeah, you get the detail.
It's sitting there and you can go through that individually and look at every bit of it. And then you go through the, on DocuSign and you, you go see the same thing again. But when you get it individually, excuse me, you can rotate the pages so you could read it. But by having it show up on your computer at a time that's convenient for you.
So, you're not standing there looking at it.
Right, you're not just hanging over.
You rotate the pages, I'm finding, and I asked Michael about this, when I get the DocuSign things assigned, they come vertically and they should be horizontal, because I have to, I look.
But if you go to the top of the page and hit view.
Oh, you can rotate it?
You can rotate it.
Clockwise, yeah.
I mean, there's been a couple instances where I've asked Mike, you know, about like a different retirement. Why is this retirement still here? I mean, there have been instances where we've.
But you can do it in.
Oh, in that sep, okay.
In the ones that are sent to you in PDF.
Yeah, yeah. So. That's the thing, in DocuSign you can't do it, but in the separate batch that she sends.
There's a lot of discussion about this on the listserv.
Yes.
And, and Mike Gilbert is not a hundred percent convinced that everything we're doing is right, but it is right. We've checked it three different times.
Yeah, we did.
And this system allows you to sit at leisure instead of hanging over the desk and trying to go through it while you're standing up and, and in an awkward situation, you can really dig down and look at what is there.
I look at everyone, I look at everyone. Because it's, you can do it at home and it's.
It's so convenient and, and so useful.
Yeah.
That everybody ought to be doing it that way.
I agree.
We've talked, you've called me before.
Yeah, I called Michael and I, like, I don't understand why we, and then Michael says, well, that's a, we're advanced payment for a tuition or it's a, yeah, right. Like, there was an HVAC maintenance thing and I was like, whoa, that's really high and I think that's what we're supposed to be doing, right?
I think so, yeah.
Usually it's pretty boring though, usually it's pretty boring to, you know, four hundred ninety-seven dollars for pencils or whatever, it's like.
If you look at how others that show up on the listserv do theirs, usually they, they bring it to a meeting.
Right.
And, and they're, they're just signing and
Yeah, right.
voting on it in unison.
Exactly.
And you have limited time, at the end of the meeting, if you're tired, they're just kind of.
And it's just signing off on it.
They just always sign at the meeting years ago.
Really?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we signed at the meeting.
So, just a couple more statements that I want to kind of choose from our narratives that we provided. One member sees a need to be more innovative in finding the means to fund the strategic plan. In addition.
Yes.
One member would like to see more involvement in the area of school improvement plans. While we see them on a yearly basis at the end of the school year, perhaps more involvement in the implementation of those school improvement plans during the school year.
I don't think we can, I don't think we can be involved in implementing them, can we?
Not necessarily involved in the implementation, but.
I think one of the things that the committee had asked for precisely, and I think we've done it now two years, was the mid-year report.
Mid-year update, yeah.
And I think that was a way to try and just keep people informed as to where the, on the goals, progress.
Several years ago.
I think you did, Mel, I think it came.
So, I think that was
Okay.
the number we was getting at. And I think that's pretty much all, I mean, for, for the most part, things stayed, you know, pretty closely to where they were in previous years. Anything you want to bring up?
When you think of it, really, we should all be giving ourselves four in every category.
Well, I was gonna speak on that.
No, no. But this, I, I wrote this, and I have no need to suck up to anybody in this committee, because I'm very self-confident and I don't really need the adulation. But I wrote, while it seems almost arrogant to give the committee exemplary scores in so many categories, I firmly believe it is deserved. We have a high-functioning committee and a productive, positive relationship with the administration. And I think in here, I, in the years we have been doing the self-assessment, I have never rated the committee this high, it's an excellent committee. I think it's the best, this group this year is the best committee I've ever served on, and that's no slight against all the committees I've served on in the past. It's, I think it's the hardest working, the subcommittees work really hard, I think we come prepared to these meetings. Nobody is ever caught off guard, as far as I can see. And if we are caught off guard, we have, we really can answer the question. Right, exactly.
Well, speaking of that, I am into statistical things, you know. And I'm always looking for improvement.
Yes.
So, I totaled these up to see just how far off we were from previous years. And we have an eight point two percent improvement.
That's very good.
And since I've been the chair during.
Are you looking for a raise?
I just want to make a point here.
Good point, Cliff.
Yeah.
That leadership is important.
In spite of Cliff, we went up eight point two percent.
Just think what you would have done without me.
Wow, we would.
Twenty percent. No, but I'm ser, I'm serious about that, every member, and it's good to have a newer member in her second year, someone kind of in the middle. Was this your sixth year or fifth year? Fourth year, and then kind of the old people who've been here for probably way too long. But it's a great mix, it's people who represent different parts of the community, with people who have kids in elementary and middle school, a high schooler soon to not be a high schooler, grandchildren, no kids at all and no attachment. These two.
Well, I have to verit him, Mel, everything you say about the committee, I mean, that's, we had to disagree.
It's really a great committee. And we don't, you know, we have differences of opinion, we don't vote unanimously on everything, but we don't hash out bad blood and whack each other around, which is not necessary. It's just not necessary to do that and I really appreciate that. And that's the end of my speech.
But I think too that, you know, we've done a good job of getting, getting the job done with two-hour meetings or two-and-a-half hour meetings.
Usually, yeah.
There's no reason that we need to go beyond that.
I mean, tonight there was because we had a public hearing, but I think usually, and I think we have a good relationship, you know, with, with the administration, with Michael, with John, with Patrick.
And I think town-wide also.
Town-wide.
You know, we serve on, you know, a lot of groups and committees within the town, too.
I think that's almost as important as, you know, having a relationship with the administration as having it with the town. We have our moments, that's for sure.
Yeah.
But we still have a very collegial, collaborative, I think, relationship with the town.
I see it, I see it in finance planning team.
Yeah, I think a big part of that too, a really big part of that was the secondary school building committee really pulled together the members from, you know, the board of selectmen, the finance, because a lot of the board of selectmen and now, of course, Michael Burrows were very active. But, you know, you had, you know, Mike Prisco and Sean Delaney were very, very active in the Estegel area.
Yeah.
And Bob Masary too, for that matter, so brought us all together.
I mean, I should, I could say that, you know, in, in terms of interacting with the public, I sometimes lose my cool on social media, I think Julie would confirm that. But I try, I try to just be informative on social media, there were a lot of questions about an issue we discussed tonight regarding the custodians. And I just try to inform and I try to make people understand by presenting the facts. And sometimes when they don't read the facts and listen, I lose my cool a little bit.
I have had people ask me about you. Yesterday I was at a christening and people were asking.
They think I need maybe some help?
No, no, no.
But anyway, that's.
And, and I mean, that kind of brings up, you know, there's still, you know, a desire, at least on some, you know, of the other stakeholders, parents, to have that social media presence, because I think they appreciate that.
Yeah, most people I think are reasonable, but then the, the ones that sometimes push a little hard, get under my skin. Julie's a lot more calm than I am, and, and Julie's smart, when she knows she might not be calm, Julie doesn't answer.
Yeah, I, I don't respond a lot of times.
I'm not as smart as Julie is.
The problem is, I think, the longer you're on the committee, the more you find yourself just status quo-ing things, you know what I'm saying? That, so, you're not really necessarily thinking out of the box or trying to come up with some really innovative things and you just, year to year, you say, and I thank God the administration is moving forward on different things, but as a school committee member, we, we don't, we don't have a lot of initiatives, do we?
I think that we would be a lot more innovative if we had more cash to work with.
That's, that's true.
Absolutely.
Because I, we're stifled.
We pushed for a lot of things, Jerry, I mean, we pushed for that foreign language program, we, I mean, we, the administration came forward with the
Digital learning?
The, uh, which, the, whatever that pay.
Global Child?
Global Child program, we didn't come up with that, but Patrick and John and.
I remember asking Kathy once at one of these types of meetings, Kathy, if we identified the best school districts, you know, whether it be Lincoln Sudbury, Alexia, Brookline, or Dover Sherbonne or anything, what would we have to do to get?
There's one answer.
Well, you're gonna say money, obviously, but I'm just saying, but I, what would that money pay for? Would it be for enhanced curriculum, would it be for additional, you know?
Be more teachers, enhanced curriculum.
Smaller class size.
Smaller class sizes, more counselors, more, more guidance counselors, more school psychologists, more social and emotional programs. I think you pay for all those things.
You're saying that you know how to spend the money if we had.
Exactly, exactly, I think we all do.
We could be very innovative.
You know, Cambridge, Cambridge spends like twenty, I think it's over twenty-five thousand dollars per student.
Per student.
Imagine that, imagine being able to pay, spend twenty, imagine what we could do with twenty-five thousand. Can you imagine?
That's ten thousand per student, that's, that's, that's absurd.
It's twelve thousand more than we're spending now.
Almost double.
That's twenty-eight, yeah.
Almost double.
Yeah.
We're at thirty-five and a half.
I saw people shaking their head tonight in the audience, but not agreeing with me. This town is a top fifteen percent town in the state in terms of per capita income. It's just not, I'm not making that up, I've done the research, we, we're a wealthy town, we're seen as a wealthy town.
It doesn't seem like it to us to live here.
Right.
But it is a very nice town, you know.
It's a very nice town, the taxes are high, but I always say, I look at, this is one of the safest towns in the state. This is the, you know, we have a good fire department, we have Ipswich River Park, people in other towns, they are so envious of us with that park. And we have park, we have, we have the new park here with, with the, the new turf, the new sod and, and this irrigation system. We have Maguire Field, we have, I, this town has more recreation than
Little League facilities.
The Little League facilities are hosting the state championship this year. There aren't a lot of towns that can do that kind of thing, and so.
But our public safety, you're right, fire department, police department, or.
I mean, we were ranked one of, I think we were ranked like the nineteenth, eighteenth safest town in Massachusetts, out of three hundred fifty-one cities and towns. So, it's a little bit off the school committee, but I think, I think it's, I think it's a pretty high-functioning town and I think most of the boards, school, the, the, all the boards in town and all the departments in town, school and town, help that.
But it appears that on success, all the credit's being given to Michael Conley.
Right, that really angered me tonight.
But it's deserved.
I would say, if I could give them a review, I think there's some questions about him on here, I would like to go back and lower my grades. Other than that, like this financial and asset management, I'd like to go back and change all the fours that I have here.
Good job, guys, a lot of work went into doing that.
Yeah. Thank you, Julie. And I think that moving forward, the committee, if it's these two or if it's somebody else, will look at, again, every year, maybe adding questions or, that's one of the things I always wonder, are there questions we could add? You know, like if I was one of you guys, one of the questions I would be, have on there is something like, Mel talks too much. One, two, three, four.
That'd be like a one.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I would ask if I was for you guys, I would have to deal with me, but other than that.
Over the past year, the chair has reached over several times to hold the gavel and thought about the impact it might. I'm teasing, Mel.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. But good job, Julie.
It's always good words and useful thoughts.
Now, you have, you're on, you're on deck with the superintendent one, right?
Is that next week, John?
May first.
Oh, May first.
I won't be here.
All right, motion to adjourn.
No, 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 no. We have no minutes.
Gifts.
Uh, no budget update.
We have gifts.
And no staffing issues. But we do have bids and donations. And if someone would be kind enough to offer some motions on these, I would appreciate it.
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude the total donation of twenty dollars from an anonymous high school parent to benefit the North Reading High School track team.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a total donation of fifty dollars from Mr. and Mrs. John Spiny to benefit the North Reading High School track team.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a total donation of five hundred dollars from the Redding Cooperative Bank to support costs associated with the May eighteenth school committee presentation by Dr. Ruth Pody on adolescent brain development.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of ninety-seven laser lights valued at two thousand nine hundred ten dollars for district-wide drama performances from Walmart.
A second.
Made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
But can I ask a question, John, do you know any more about that? That's pretty, is that for the auditorium, is that for the performing arts center, do you know, or?
Sorry, I don't.
You don't?
But that's all I know, is it's for that department.
It would be for the performing arts center, it could benefit all the.
So, it just adds, adds to the lighting system that we have now?
Yeah, it's a little device, they show, I had, I, they sent me a picture, it's a little device that just kind of adds some of those.
Also laser, okay.
We checked with Allison Kane and Carla and they very much wanted them.
Oh, excellent, great.
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a total donation of four thousand dollars from the Hornet Hall of Fame for the high school, middle school field project.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a total donation of four thousand five hundred dollars from the North Reading High School hockey boosters to offset the cost of winter two thousand seventeen ice time.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. It's nine, nine, over nine thousand dollars. Thank you all very much. Proportions. Subcommittee updates, evaluations, subcommittee met on March twenty-ninth.
No, no big updates, we compiled our results and discussed the upcoming superintendent evaluation, so.
Okay. Finance planning team met on April fourth. Vanessa, you wanna?
I think we incorporated most of what we talked about into this meeting, it was mostly budget, we got down to that number, with whatever the number is, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Correct.
There was some discussion, in spite of the weather and the weather that we had last week, that there still might potentially be some money left over in snow and ice reserves. So, I don't know if that's been exhausted or not, because we, we had the, another storm. And, what else, John?
Did they?
There was indication that there was optimism that there would still be a reserve amount from that, despite that Saturday, Friday, Saturday.
A little chunk of money to cut the deficit down.
Last, what is, Mike, didn't the stake go up ten dollars per, from twenty to thirty, wasn't it at twenty? Yeah, it was at twenty.
It was at twenty.
And they went to thirty?
The whole was to go to.
For the house, so that's another twenty-six thousand.
And there was also a discussion about possible, you know, some sort of down payment on the foundation budget. I'm not sure, I, I didn't have a chance to really read through it.
Was it towards special ed and health insurance?
Toward, toward health insurance and special education costs and transportation. I don't really understand what that could mean going forward, but I know that it went from twenty to thirty dollars.
Tracy Novak, I bet will have a good, she'll have a good review tomorrow of the, I'll send it to you.
Yes. Yes.
She usually does a good job of analyzing.
You sent something today.
Yes.
I have a meeting on Thursday with the.
I mean, there was an executive summary based on the Ways and Means Committee that, you know, again, but that's not finally approved, so.
We've also learned, I think, that the town's deficit was down to like 88 or 90,000.
91, I think, so less.
They were still talking about potentially some more budget items being added so that deficit could potentially, I think, go up.
That's correct.
The health insurance, I think, is pretty much locked in, and, you know, the cross rate is going to be about 2.5%, so that's factored in already into this number. It's already in here.
I have a little bit of late-breaking information on that. As, as recent as tonight, the town administrator, administrator spoke to me that he received some information today. They're hoping for an insurance advisory committee that, meeting this week. The one last Thursday was postponed. So he's hoping to be able to speak more definitively about what the increase will be, trying to hold at that 2.5%.
And the last, I think there was some discussion too about the bathroom article on the warrant.
Yes, yeah.
Being on the town warrant for the town meeting, so.
Well, I want to concern you, you guys mentioned a $338,000 deficit, but that doesn't, so that's taking out the new teacher at the high school, taking out the.
Correct.
K through five, and I personally don't support taking.
It's taking out those four and IPS 22.
Our budget is probably more, deficit is more than that because we're all in agreement that.
I think, I think it was pretty clearly conveyed at the finance planning team meeting that that's the budget the committee is entertaining still.
And the thing was, I mean, we argued on the recommended budget, not the level.
Right.
Okay.
That's the point, yeah.
We argued at the finance planning team on that budget, so we set that number.
Okay.
And there's a meeting on the 24th.
The 24th morning.[1482.12]